Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting and public hearing. Sonya, would you kindly call the roll?
Chairman Coachera.
President.
Commissioner Scanlon.
Here.
Commissioner Lesniak.
Here.
Commissioner Mahul.
Here.
Mr. Mateo.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Mr. Pelletier.
Here.
We have a call.
Great. So we'd like to call this evening's proceedings to order. Our primary order of business is a public hearing later in the meeting, but we do have a few administrative items before that. The first of which is approval of our Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting and public hearing minutes from May 24th, 2017. Do I have a motion with respect to those minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as published.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding those minutes?
There's a typo on page four. Attorney Morris's name is missing an S.
Oh. Did not catch that.
Friendly, but...
So with that change, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Stayed. Two abstentions for those of us who were not present. And I just wanted to thank Commissioner Mateo for chairing that meeting in my absence. Thanks, Jill. Okay. Any visitor petitions, citizens' requests, or other communications? We have three members of the village with us this evening. Presumably your folks are with us with respect to the public hearing. Is that right? Okay. Okay. Sonya, do you have any village board updates for us this evening?
The text amendment for animal shelters and the special use for the Greater Chicago Ferret Association were approved at the last board meeting. Additionally, the text amendment with the various clarifications was also adopted at that meeting. So those were all approved by the village board with minimal discussion.
And our friends from the ferret shelter are... They've not yet submitted?
Right. They have not submitted their business license application yet, but presumably they're working on that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Then moving to item six on this evening's agenda. This is a public hearing regarding a text amendment to allow metal roofs as permitted building materials in the residential zoning district. If we could call that meeting to order. Sonya, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lesniak.
Still here.
Commissioner Mateo.
Here.
Commissioner Scanlon.
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Mahul.
Here.
Chairman Coachera.
President?
Still have a call.
Okay. And we'd like to call the public hearing to order. A notice of this evening's hearing was published in the June 7 Riverside Brookfield Landmark. Any objection to me reading an abbreviated notice of the hearing? Okay. Notice is hereby given to all interested persons that a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Village of Riverside will be held on Wednesday, June 28, 2017, to consider an application from petitioner Mark Bennett for a proposed text amendment to the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance to allow metal roofs as permitted building materials in the residential zoning districts. This is formerly known as application number PZ17-006, and it concerns a proposed text amendment specifically to Section 1043G, prohibited building materials within the residential districts. And if this does go forward, there are other areas of the code that would potentially be changed to reflect this. So... So the public hearing is officially open, and at this point, we'd like to swear in any petitioners who anticipate presenting to us this evening.
If you could stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Sonya, would you kindly tee us off here?
Certainly. So we are looking at a text amendment that was submitted by Mr. Bennett to amend Section 1043G, which is the prohibited building materials within residential districts. Currently, the zoning code does not allow metal exterior finishes as the predominant surface finish material in residential buildings, and based on this prohibition, staff has not allowed existing roofs to be replaced with metal roofs. The proposed text amendment would exempt certain types of metal roofs from the prohibition on metal exterior finishes in the materials list in 1043G. The petitioner would like to replace their current asphalt shingles with a metal roof material. They state that metal roofs are more durable, and that other buildings in town, including our water tower and the firehouse pump room, have metal roofs. The petitioner believes that metal roofs can enhance the aesthetics of a home and would not have a negative impact on the character of residential neighborhoods. Staff has reviewed other communities in the area, and most do not prohibit specific exterior finishes in residential districts. Staff believes Riverside's prohibition comes from a desire to prohibit pole barn type structures from being built in the residential districts, and therefore, metal wall panels and aluminum steel and other metal sightings were specifically prohibited. There are different types of metal roofs, including the corrugated metal panels, standing seam metal panels, as well as metal shingles. Other communities have been allowing these type of roofs to be placed on residential structures. So the petitioner has provided some pictures of his house with the existing asphalt shingles, as well as a picture of the house with the proposed metal roof. So kind of idea of what it would look like with the metal seam roof on it. They're proposing the standing seam type metal roof, I believe, based on the picture that was provided. So if this text amendment is approved, the petitioner would be able to obtain a building permit to replace their existing roof with a standing seam metal roof, and additionally, then that would allow other homeowners in town, if they wanted to replace their roofs with metal roofs, they would be allowed to do that. So you have in your packet the pictures that he provided, as well as a PowerPoint presentation that comes from the Metal Roofing Association that kind of goes over different... Kind of some of the preconceived notions, what's true, what's not true about metal roofs and the different types of materials for your reference. And you also have a copy of the draft text amendment, which reads at the end, number 11, where it says aluminum steel and other metal sightings. It adds "other than metal tile roofing or standing seam roofing which are permitted."
And just...
So that would be the amendment that would make that exception for those types of metal roofing materials.
And just to be clear, the general applicability of this change would not apply only to replacement roofs, but also to new construction?
Exactly.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions for Sonya?
Sonya, I meant to look this up. What is a pole barn structure?
Think about like the accessory buildings that you would see for like industrial buildings and things like that, where you have basically completely metal sided buildings and roofs. And so a lot of times, it's more of an industrial nature or outbuildings for agricultural uses. And they're very simple structures typically with the metal siding on them. So...
Okay. Whose roofs are typically supported by poles, but not always?
Not always.
I was envisioning like a circus tent or something.
I guess.
Okay.
Think of a metal circus.
Not always.
Think of a metal circus tent.
But I mean, it's, you know, you'll see them, you know, sometimes you'll see like the car storage places where you can like lease spaces to store your cars. A lot of those will be the pole barn style buildings, and they have metal exteriors, metal roofs, et cetera.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. At this point, we'd like to welcome the petitioner to make a presentation, and on a personal note, we'd like to welcome former planning commissioner Paul Sterner, who's joining us this evening. Good to see you. Welcome.
Good to be guys.
Please, please come to the podium.
Okay. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and my name's Mark Bennett. This is my wife Cheryl Bennett. We live at 129 East Burlington, and we think it'd be a good idea as we need to replace our roof with a metal roof. And just for the attractiveness and durability of the metal roof. And Paul, going into details, Paul Sterner is our architect, and so he has more of the detailed material on that. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Paul Sterner. I'm an architect. I live in Kenosha, Wisconsin currently. I'm here with Mark and Cheryl. They approached me to discuss kind of what they could do for their home, and I know that in terms of the history, going back to when the residential code was being done, reworked, there was a lot of different things being discussed at the time, and I know we didn't really discuss kind of the material portion of that because there were so much other things to do. Leading down the line since then, I know that there was solar ordinance that was passed a few years ago as well. And then Bennett's approached me regarding wanting to have this type of roof. And I started thinking to myself, because of the solar ordinance being passed and the fact that you could put solar panels on a roof, and a lot of current technology, there's a lot of integration of metal panel to solar that really is quite nice looking, can be even integrated, so you'll even see it as part of a separation of a panel sitting on top. So in terms of the technology changing, the fact that a metal roof is a higher, more expensive roof than an asphalt shingle roof, so it's an upgrade to what you're currently doing. And in their case, you know, they have a home in Colorado, which is very common because of snow, those types of things. Other communities within Illinois and that I've worked with also don't ban that type of material. Now, the only thing I'll throw out there is I know there could be some crazy colors that could be chosen. If that's a concern, I would recommend you guys maybe doing a palette that's acceptable or something, if that's going to derail the chance for them to do a metal panel roof or a standing seam in this case. Addressing the pole barn question, you know, like the storage facilities that you see, that's probably the most common thing you'd see. They're the kind of big corrugated panels, and they're actually structural too, so they're... This is different. This is something that has to sit on a substrate, has to be on a sheathed roof. And typically, it's not recommended to put them over asphalt shingles, and I would not recommend that. And then there'd be something else you might want to include, that it needs to be stripped clean and clear and put a new metal panel on top of new building felt and water shield, that type of thing. So we did want to point out obviously that both the water tower downtown and the pump room are cast iron. That's how old they are. So those are pretty original or very old architectural elements in town. Even the gateway little kiosks coming into town have copper simulating that type of roof as well, which I thought's interesting. And I know there is one home in the first division that is a standing seam metal roof. And I don't think I've heard many people complaining about that. I used to live here, obviously, and I know the owners, and I think it's a very nice looking home. So I think that should also be taken into consideration. But we'd like to go ahead and present this as an option, not having it be a banned material anymore for a resident to be able to utilize that type of an option for a new roof, whether it's new construction or renovation in this case. So I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Sterner or for the Bennetts?
No.
Okay. Then I think at this point, we can officially close the public hearing and then open it up to our discussion.
Motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So our public hearing is now closed and open it up to discussion amongst ourselves.
Do you have any insight into the house on Scottswood? I know you said it came before this ordinance was in play, or I thought it did.
Yeah. This house was built, I believe, around 2001, 2002, and at that point, there was not a prohibited building materials list in the zoning ordinance that came with the 2005 update of the residential districts. So I have never heard any complaints about that. Obviously, they haven't come in to replace the roof at this point, so, you know, we haven't really heard any negative feedback on that. But that is a standing seam metal roof was part of the house when it was built.
Of the architecture.
Yeah. So that's the status of that one.
It's a very modern architecture. It's very tastefully done.
Yes.
I was going to say, I can attest to the fact that I didn't even notice that it was a standing seam metal roof, and I walk by it almost every day with my dog.
It is difficult to see from street level. You don't see very much of it. Yeah.
For those who haven't seen it, it's a...
Arced.
It's a...
Right.
I don't want to call it a hanger look, but it's definitely a curved, a barrel of copper, standing seam roof on a modern house that's very tastefully done. Questions?
No. I personally like the look of metal roofs. I definitely like the green aspect of it in terms of, you know, the waste that comes when you strip off the asphalt shingles that can't be recycled, unlike a metal roof, which one lasts longer, and then when you do switch it out, that metal can then be recycled. So I definitely like the green aspect of it. I think it fits with the eclectic look of Riverside, so I personally have no aesthetic concerns about it. My two concerns is that if we put this, if we make the adjustment to the code, I would like to have snow guards be a requirement of the code, because on a metal roof, you know, the snow comes off very quickly, but it could come off in a huge avalanche unless there's snow guards there to prevent it coming off in a big sheet, which could, you know, literally bury a person, or sheets of ice coming off in one chunk, because it does slide more easily on a metal roof. And I also would be interested to know what the fire chief says about it in terms of if they become very prevalent, if we were to approve this and it becomes very prevalent in Riverside, if they need to make any adjustments to their training protocol, because obviously a firefighter couldn't crawl on the roof to vent it, and if their existing tools, I assume the existing hatches and stuff they use could get through a metal roof if they needed to vent it out.
Oh, yes.
In the unlikely case that there's a fire.
Let me answer that.
Yeah.
They can. This is not like a quarter inch thick steel. This is a very thin material. If you took a hammer to it, you'd go through it.
Right. And that's my understanding, is that the existing, like a hatchet, whatever fire hatchet they're using would get through it. But climbing on the roof would be something that just we need to advise firefighters against.
And that I can also attest that is typically not an issue on metal roofs, because I've walked them myself. Okay? This is, I mean, it's a standard roof of standard care that you would have to be on it. I, as far as the guards go, as you mentioned, again, the only time I would probably say that that should be recommended is that if it potentially can affect a neighbor in terms of snow coming down, or if they want to put it over their doorway, which is something they can choose to do. But I wouldn't necessarily enforce that, to say that it has to have snow guards around the whole thing. I think that that's unnecessary. It's an added cost, and I don't think it's... That should be left up to the owner unless it affects the neighbor next door, meaning that for some reason, their driveway is right next to the building or something like that. That would be the only time I'd ever be concerned with it. Other than that, I would never want to enforce that and say, "You have to do this."
Okay. Fair enough. I respect your opinion. I guess I'm speaking for my own personal opinion with metal roofs in terms of, you know, the ease and the safety of walking on it and the snow guards.
I have a question. I guess this would be directed to David and to Mr. Sterner, who with architectural backgrounds. In the presentation, it's from the Metal Roofing Association, there's a reference to this being applicable to high quality metal roofs. And the question becomes, are there different levels of quality that we should be mindful of and perhaps address within any changes that we might consider? Is a metal roof a metal roof, or is there different levels of quality that we might want to permit some but not others?
Standing seams are pretty standard in terms of manufacturers. They're all competing with each other. They're all basically the same. I cannot speak for shingles, metal shingles. I've never used them, so I couldn't tell you that if there's an issue.
And that's actually one of the things that I wanted to acknowledge as too. I'm mostly familiar with standing seam copper. I'm obviously familiar with other materials, but I'm unfamiliar with the metal tile and other form factors of metal. Again, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves here, but to the extent that we want to permit this and get to the point of considering text amendment language, I guess the question then becomes, is the proposed language that we've been provided in the staff memo here under item 11, is this sufficient to cover what we would intend to do here? And specifically, the language says aluminum. This would be such materials may be used as part of decorative or detail elements or as part of the exterior construction that is not used as a surface material finish. And item 11 includes aluminum, steel, or other metal siding other than metal tile roofing or standing seam roofing which are permitted. And the question is, is that language both exclusive and inclusive enough were we to proceed? And again, I guess I defer to the closest thing we have to experts on that.
Well, ultimately, I'm just wondering if we have a line 12 that just talks about roofing and the materials that we would allow, instead of like just tacking it onto the aluminum steel or other metal sightings, which I think we are not permitted. I would just do a new section under roofing and say roofing, and then permitted, and then list all the materials that you can put on there. Again, I'm not against metal tiles. I just can't speak to the different qualities that could exist out there. I also think too, and I'm going to bring this up, but even though it's probably, we couldn't discuss it, but the next big wave is going to be solar tiles.
Right.
And it's going to be interesting to see how we do that, because that's going to become a very big thing shortly, when it comes out in about six months from now. So I think having just a separate roofing item would be good, because then we can add to it if we need to.
But section G is prohibited items, so if you're having a line in there, permitted items, it's a little awkward.
Yeah. You'd have to get, we'd have to get staff and attorney Morris to address that approach uniformly throughout the zoning ordinance. And then I guess then, do we now open ourselves up to what we've been struggling with for years and years, which is the whole aesthetic policing and saying what we can and can't do? Do we want to go into permitted materials? Because then you'd have to get into, you know, half a dozen types of cedar roof, asphalt, and there would be a long list, and invariably, we would miss something or have to change it again, to your point, when solar comes out. This may be the most economical way of addressing it.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I mistaken that this was all the prohibitive material, so that's fine.
Okay. And I apologize. I didn't mean to, in any way, jump to a conclusion that we were all comfortable with this. So let's, let me back up and again, open it up to questions or additional comments that others might have with regard to either being supportive of or not supportive of this approach. And I guess as part of that preamble, or second preamble, would again, direct your attention to staff memo page two, where nine standards for, nine standards, lettered A through I, must be met in order for us...
No, they don't have to be met. They are, because this is more of legislative...
Just consideration.
So this is kind of to help you...
Formulate.
Formulate an opinion. So it's a legislative discretion. It's not controlled by any one standard, but it is recommended that you look at these standards as you consider any amendments to the zoning code.
So...
I'd say that I'm generally in favor of it, and I hesitate to say that it looks better on a farmhouse style building rather than, say, a bungalow, but that may be advancing too much into the aesthetic issue. So generally, in favor.
Okay. Yeah, there are definitely, I've seen many different examples where, on different styles of architecture, where you see it on some very high-end custom homes, as everything from that to pole barns, so...
There's no guarantee. I think it's the short summary.
Teresa, thoughts?
I agree. I don't take any exception to it. I think it's actually to the benefit of our residents to allow this material. It's, you know, it provides them flexibility. The durability is important. Not only can you recycle it after you've used it, but it is made out of recycled material itself. You know, metal is one of the highest recycled materials, so I think it's a benefit.
Great. David, any additional comments?
No.
Okay. Adrian?
No. Generally in favor of it.
Jill?
I have four questions and comments based on driving out to Hinsdale and looking at buildings with metal roofs, and talking to a builder and a contractor, both here in Riverside. We might want to consider limiting the color palette. I saw one house out, I don't have to say where it is, very bright red roof, and I know we don't legislate aesthetics, but we might want to consider that here. I don't know if we want...
Dave's terribly shaking his head.
Teresa's shaking her head.
Well, we don't, you know, we don't have a palette for paint, and I've seen some what might be called garish colors. So, you know, I think that we should now legislate this.
We don't legislate it now.
Well, I think we should consider it, so I've said that. Okay. One of the buildings I saw, which I believe was a municipal building in Hinsdale, it darn near blinded me, but for a homes roof pitch, that's probably not going to be a problem, is it? Safe to say?
From, just from the glare?
What was the pitch on it, that it was glaring?
I don't remember exactly. Mr. Sterner, any thoughts on that?
Depends on the angle of the sun, I guess.
Well, true.
It's temporary.
Okay. One of the builders I spoke with, who was all in favor of metal roofs and has worked in Colorado as well, brought up the ice dam requirement. So Sonya, if you've looked at codes in other villages, do they have, speak to this at all?
Well, usually, that's addressed in the building code and requiring like ice shielding and things like that. So it's certainly something that we are looking at updating our building code, and so that's certainly something that we can address if it needs to be addressed, depending on what the 2012 building codes say about that.
Just for my own...
So since, I'm sorry, have you noticed, so since this has come up a couple times now, are we essentially, are we deferring to the building code with regard to the ice protection? Is that essentially what we're saying? Other than, you know, David said unless it affects a neighbor's house. And I guess the question becomes, how do we, if we're in agreement with Commissioner Lesniak's point on that, how do we reflect that in this language? Or do we leave that up to staff to review? Pardon me, sorry.
I would think that we would defer to staff to go with the building code. It seems like it's a safety, I think, of the building code.
I don't know the building code well enough with respect to that item to know if that's sufficient to put the controls, the safety related controls that we, it sounds like we would like to see in there.
I think what Jill is saying...
Can you go to the podium? Come up to the podium, sorry, so the cameras can get you.
I'll start. I think what Jill was referring to is actually the below layer, the ice water shield, the fact that you need, that's why you need to really strip the roof, because I know Menon...
Because I know Menards does have a product, hey, we can put it on top of your existing asphalt shingles. That's not what you want to do. You want to clean the roof. Any corners where there's vertical walls, you need to wrap up ice and water shield in addition to flashing it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think that's what she was talking about.
Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I'm not the builder.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. So yeah, those are two very distinct items. Ice and water is what goes underneath the roofing material. And I thought we were still referring to the protection for ice.
I thought it was something on top of it, but I'm not sure. But if building code's going to take care of it, then we're covered.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Please.
So my final question, in the metal roof manufacturers PowerPoint, whoever it is, there's shingle and there's tile. Do we want to add shingle to our text amendment? If they are different things? Do we care?
Yes, that's.
Are they, does anyone know if they are different?
I think it's more a matter of semantics.
Yeah, they're basically the same thing.
Tiles might be considered to be slightly thicker. Shingles, generally, one thinks of as asphalt three tab.
So it would not preclude shingle, in your opinion?
I don't, if honestly, honestly, a metal shingle would probably be virtually indistinguishable from a standard asphalt roof, except for perhaps some color issues or sheen issues.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So essentially, I think that's, Commissioner Mattia's last point was related to mine earlier with regard to the proposed language to ensure that we're inclusive enough to not inadvertently exclude a material that we're comfortable with. So it sounds like we're fine with metal.
And we can, I mean, it's an easy fix, say, other than metal tile or shingle roofing or standing seam roofing.
Okay, so easy enough to insert shingle, okay? Okay, Allison?
I am in agreement to have them. I don't have a concern. I like them aesthetically. I also concur with Teresa in terms of, and David in terms of regulating the color. We don't currently regulate the color. And yeah, there are some interesting combinations on some of the Victorian homes in town. And, you know, unless we want to start going down that path, I think we would be hard for us to then dictate what could be on our roof. It's a slippery slope, I think, once you start going down that path. Although I can see where you're coming from. If someone next door to me put in a purple roof, I have a little bit of concern, unless I went to Northwestern.
Okay. All right then. Any additional comments or questions from commissioners? Closing comments from commissioners, Mr. Sterner? Okay, then I think at this point, we are ready, I'm certainly ready to entertain a motion with regard to this item.
I'll make a motion that we accept the metal tile and metal, or standing seam panel roofs as written in.
Slightly amended?
Slightly amended code.
The proposed, the draft text amendment, right, okay.
Make amendment that we approve.
Okay, second?
Second. Teresa got it.
Sonia, would you kindly call the roll?
All righty, Commissioner Lesniak?
Yes.
Commissioner Marhol?
Yes.
Commissioner Mateo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes.
Commissioner Pilateer?
Yes.
Commissioner Scanlon?
Yes.
Chairman Kuchera?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
So this will go on to the village board. It should be on their, what would that be, July 20th agenda for them to approve the ordinance. Okay.
Any matters of old business? Matters of new business?
Does this need to go before a presidential, as a question?
Oh, shoot, yes it does. We'll get on that as well.
Will that change the board's?
We'll see what I can do. They work.
They're the 13th, I think?
EDC is actually this month, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to quickly prematurely go through that. So any matters of old business? Old ma, or old matters of new business? Any new business items?
Not at this time.
Have you heard anything more from the Harlem and Burlington property owner, the brewery?
Last I heard, they were working with their fire suppression system company to get those plans put together. So, to get those reviewed, so, but I haven't gotten a recent.
But they're still working, so that's good.
I believe they're still working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. I do have one item under information. Oh, I'm sorry. We've been joined by, we've been joined by a resident?
Full school adjourned here to sit down, not here for any particular reason.
Okay, great, welcome. Well, thank you very kindly for joining us. I do have one item under item nine on our agenda this item, or this evening, under information. And if you would indulge me, I'd like to read a short email that I sent to President Sells and staff on the 23rd of May. Village President Sells, "Since 2003, I have had the honor and privilege of serving Riverside on the Preservation Commission, on the Plan Commission, and since it was created, on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Serving the village has been one of the most rewarding joys of my life as a Riverside resident. I've taken the occasion of my commission renewal in June to conclude that now would be a good time to hand off this privilege to the next generation of talented leaders. I respectfully request that my commission be allowed to expire effective at the conclusion of the June 28th, 2017 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which I will chair. I am extremely grateful for having been given the opportunity by several boards over the years to serve the village that my family and I call home. And I hope that somehow I've contributed to it being a better place than it was. I am pleased with and proud of the accomplishments over the years that the Planning and Zoning Commission, in concert with the great work performed by the Village Board of Trustees under your leadership, has contributed to Riverside's progress. It does take a small village to successfully steward an actual village, and it's been a privilege to have worked with so many wonderfully talented village staff, trustees, commissioners, and counselors who have all been inspirationally committed to the vibrancy of Riverside while respecting its special heritage. As a resident, I am very grateful to all in village government who ongoingly help make Riverside a special place to live. Thank you for that. Perhaps there will be another opportunity for me to again, serve when the timing is right, and that would be something I would enjoy considering. In the meantime, I wish you, the Village Board of Trustees, Sonia, Jessica, and the entire Village of Riverside team, all the best. Good luck in all your endeavors. See you around town very cordially. Paul Kuchera." So, thank you all very much for your service.
That's a heck of a round. Yes.
Your collegiate eligibility.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Fifteen years?
Yeah, starting at, Jeff Wyder was the one who appointed me, or nominated me for preservation back then, so.
That's quite around.
Yeah, it's been fun. It's been fun. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.